All right, do we have agenda? Somebody's been messing with my chair here. Somebody lowered this thing on me. I feel a little bit like a midget. All right. And I don't have my phone either, so we're at the proper time? We are? Are we filming this?
Yes.
All right. If I could have the camera, please. There we go. Called the study session of, I guess it's March 11th to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I could have roll call, please.
Counselperson breeding?
Here.
Higgins?
Here.
Kelsey?
Here.
Parkinson?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Salsito?
Here.
One more. One more.
Mayor Kearns?
Here.
Okay. All right, folks. The reason that we are here is to discuss marijuana, obviously. At some point, I think it was two years ago or so, after the law came into effect for the medical marijuana, we decided at that particular time to opt out. With the changes in the law, it is now that that decision has no real bearing on what is going to be taking place in the future. So, we needed to make another decision of which way that we are going to go. With the vote that was in November, that I think there was a good portion of our audience or our residents that voted, that voted in favor of the recreational use of marijuana. I think 58 percent, if, don't sue me for that. So, before we made a determination of which way that we were going to go and what we were going to talk about, obviously, it thought it best that we hear from our constituents here, too. But what's going to happen here is our city manager, Matt Copler, is going to make a brief presentation. And at that point afterwards, we'll hear a little bit from counsel if they want to have something to say. And then, we're going to listen to what you have to say. And we don't really have a time limit on this type of meeting, so we'll listen to whatever somebody has to say within, I'll say, within reason. Okay. Within reason, because we don't want to be here till tomorrow morning. And with that, since we don't want to be here till tomorrow morning, I'll shut up and I'll give it to our city manager, Mr. Copler.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. I have just a few slides I want to go through really quick. I was told to keep it brief, so hopefully, that's what will happen here. But I wanted to give a little bit of background on what are the choices that the mayor and council are going to be confronting over the next few months here. And so, I guess, jump right into it. What is the question that mayor and council has to answer? And it's, should the city opt out of the MRTMA? And that's the official, if you go back here real quick, you see Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, MRTMA. If, and this is a little bit different, as the mayor said, the medical marijuana changes that was done about a year and a half or so ago, you had to opt in. And as the mayor said, the city decided not to do that. In this go around, you have to decide to opt out. And if you don't opt out, then it's all illegal unless you do something else. So, if mayor and council ultimately decide not to, or decide to opt out, then really, all they have to do is adopt an ordinance that says, "We're out," and makes it all illegal within the city limits in terms of the type of businesses that can operate within the city of Lincoln Park, except for those businesses already licensed under the very first medical marijuana law. And there's currently one in the city right now. But if the mayor and council say, "Nope, we're not going to opt out. We're going to allow marijuana businesses to happen within the city," then there's a whole other set of questions that have to be answered. You know, what are the types of businesses we're going to allow? Are we going to allow all the types, or are we just a limited number of types? And then, how many of those, each types that, you know, we want to allow, are we going to allow within it? And then, the where, will these be allowed? You know, the hours of operation, and how they operate? These are all things that, under the new law, the cities have the right to enforce and create ordinances and codes for. So, obviously, if council decides to opt out, there's not much more to talk about. But if they do decide to stay in, then, as I said, there's a lot of different questions. So, what types of establishments are permissible within the new law? Growers, and there's a Class A, Class B, Class C. A is the smallest, up to 100 plants. A Class B can go up to 500 plants, and a Class C can go up to 2,000. Just for a point of reference, I believe the one that is in operation or has the license to operate within the city can, I think, grow up to 72 plants, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, so, it's a big difference. There's also a business called processor, and this is who extracts resin from plant or creates marijuana infused products. There's also a secure transporter, and that's who's going to possibly transport the marijuana and cash between facilities, although the law does not require that a licensed, secure transporter do that. So, anybody can do it, but there is a license available through the state for a secure transporter. A safety compliance facility, and just as it sounds, this test samples of marijuana for the purity, and if there's any, anything in there that shouldn't be in there. And then, there's a retailer. Now, this is a little bit different than what you might think, because you're thinking, "Well, this is going to be anybody to sell marijuana." But under the new law, the way it's defined, this is actually people that are registered patients and caregivers. You can only sell it on the medical side to registered patients and caregivers. Now, one of the things, and I'll talk about this a little bit later, is that the state has not established the rules and regulations yet. And because of that, everything I'm about to tell you and all we're talking about may change dramatically in the next few months. So, this is only what we know today, not what we know the state's going to do. So, this definition may change sometime in the future, but currently, it's anticipated that it's only selling of medical marijuana to registered patients and caregivers. But besides that, you can also have micro businesses. And these micro businesses can grow up to 150 plants, process, package, and sell marijuana, but it doesn't say it has to be to registered patients and caregivers. So, you'd assume that this is how the retail, or at least one methodology for the retail recreational marijuana to be sold. And then, it wouldn't be the state if they didn't also throw in any other type of marijuana-related business licensed by the state. So, again, we don't have any idea what that means, but it's given the ability for the state to come up with whatever it means later on. And it may happen sooner rather than later, but we don't know. So, if the council decides to allow businesses to operate, these are the types of businesses that could operate within the city. And as I said, they can decide, "Well, we'll allow all these type of businesses within the city, or we're only going to allow growers and safety compliance facilities, or we'll allow micro businesses and retailers and growers." So, again, if they decide to allow it to happen, they have to then choose which one of these that they are going to allow to happen. And then, the next question after that is, how many are you going to allow to happen within the city? So, it could be five growers and two processors, and eight safety compliance facilities, and 10 micro businesses. But again, these are all questions that if council, mayor and council says we're going to allow it, that will have to be answered within the ordinances we adopt. And then, there's the question of the where, the hours, the manner of operation. So, the law allows the city to regulate the time, the place, and manner of operation of any of those establishments we just talked about. And in doing so, the city council, mayor and council will have to amend zoning code to allow it, because right now, if you read our zoning code, you're only allowed to have these medical facilities, growing facilities, in one section of the city. And that's in our industrial section, which is basically along Papless Drive. And then, we'll have to amend some of the general and police powers of the city code to permit and perhaps limit the number of marijuana establishments in the city, which we just talked about, to create a licensing process complementary to that of the state and of the Medical Marijuana Act. And again, we've not done that as of yet. We have one for the first medical marijuana law, but we have done nothing related to this. So, if mayor and council decide to allow it, we're going to have to create that licensing process. And then, we have to set forth the responsibilities and obligations of the marijuana establishment operators, but in doing so, we cannot do it unreasonably impractical. So, you can't say, "Well..." You can operate, but you can only operate between the hours of 10:05 a.m. and 10:10 a.m. That would not be allowed under the law. And I guess the unfortunate piece, what we're being told is, until the state comes out with the rules and regulations, a lot of these different things are so up in the air, it may end up being a court deciding what happens. So, there's probably going to be some legal challenges to whatever the state does, and by extension, whatever in the cities do as well. We can establish reasonable restrictions on public signs related to the establishment. So, again, the city, just like any type of business that we allow, we do have a sign code that says, "This is the size, this is the place where you can have it, you know, where it can be displayed." But, you know, where we don't have the ability is what the sign says, because that is constitutionally protected according to the Supreme Court. So, we can say where, what the size, but we can't necessarily limit what it says on there. And then, another part is, the city may charge annual fee of not more than $5,000 to defray the costs. So, we talked about, really briefly, where this is allowed under the MMMA, which is PA of 2008, which is the medical, first medical marijuana act. And you can see that to the right side of the screen, you have the whole map of the city, and to the left side of the screen, you can see Papless Drive, which is effectively the only place under that code that it is allowed. And again, something that, as we move forward, mayor and council would be working away from in deciding where it could go. It's kind of my opinion on this, that if we do allow it, they will have to do a new zoning ordinance to quantify or qualify where these type of establishments can go. We can't just say, "Well, we've already decided in the past that it's going to go along Papless, so we're okay." I don't believe that's the case. I know that's something the city attorney is actually looking into to make sure that that is correct. So, we're going to have to do something if we do allow these types of establishments. Some other items to think about in this, the state has one year to put their regulatory framework into place. That started effectively after the law went into effect, was certified, so that was in late November, I guess. If they don't act within that year's timeframe, then we have the ability and responsibility to then come up with the regulatory rules for those first licenses that will get issued. So, within a year of the certification of the vote, there will be establishments in the state of Michigan. The question is, will it be under a state-run regulatory framework at that point in time, or will they not be able to get it done, and it falls to the cities? And if it does fall to the cities, depending upon, again, if we decide there's going to be five of these and two of those and one of this, we're going to have to figure out if there's a lot more people applying for those than we're allowing, how we are going to allow those licenses to be issued. Because again, you know, it has to be a competitive public process to do that, and one that's probably fraught with a lot of legal challenges as well. Something else that's kind of interesting within this is, for the first 24 months of applications, once it is allowable, only Michigan residents may receive a Class A grower or micro business license. And only, under, those licensed under the MMFLA, the Medical Marijuana, may receive a Class B or Class C grower, processor, secure transporter, or retailer license. And so, you know, for the smaller operations, it has to be a Michigan resident. Here's, you don't have to have any understanding or background of the business, but if you want the bigger license or become a processor, or a secure transporter, or retailer, you're going to have to have some experience, and you have to have gone through the licensing process previously to be able to do that. And again, I wanted to point out that the city has right to charge a fee of not more than $5,000 to defray the administrative and enforcement costs.
$5,000 a business?
Correct, per license.
Per license.
Yes. Now, let me just say that there's a lot more to this than what I just pointed out to you. If you go to our website, you'll be able to see not only this presentation, but we also have a document that was put together by the Michigan Municipal League, as well as, actually, two documents by the Michigan Municipal League. And we'll also link back to the state, so you can find out more information. But there is a lot more, but I was limited to what I can talk about, because we want to get out of here, I was told. But we could be here. I know Amy Higgins, our Assistant City Attorney, went to a presentation by the Municipal League with me. I think that we were there for a couple hours. There's a lot more to this than what I've talked about, but I think this is a good framework to discuss tonight, so.
Whatever our neighbors done, if you have that information.
What we know right now, I believe Allen Park has opted not to offer these establishments or allow these establishments. I believe South Gate has done so as well. I think, and I'm not sure if, and I'm pretty sure that River Rouge is going to allow certain businesses within there, but I don't have anything yet in terms of what they're going to allow.
And this isn't going to start, anyway, until the state gets the regulations together, but within a year?
Yeah. And, you know, we, I've heard a couple different things, you know? One, that it may be as early as June that these regulations will be out. I've also heard that it could take a lot longer, and we might be needing to think about how we're going to regulate those licenses. So, but a year after the certification of the vote, these establishments will be in place, or can start operating.
Okay. Does council want to be heard, or you want us to have?
Can I ask a quick question?
Listen to the residents first? Yeah, go ahead.
When you say that, within a year of the vote, are we talking from November's?
Yeah, I don't remember exactly what the certification date was. I think somewhere in all this mess, I do have that. But it's effectively a year from that date that they have to have it. December 6, approximately.
All right.
Just a quick comment, I guess, or question. Didn't I read where the state had a problem with the layer board and redid something recently because there was a big holdup with licenses? So, they even reinvented the process again to another board or another appointed body? I thought I read something, there was a problem with the process, and there wasn't. Okay.
I'm unfamiliar with that, but it's a very complicated, they're creating an entire regulatory scheme, and I should imagine it's going to be very difficult.
My last question, I guess, is, if this petition was written and with all these rules on it, why is there such a problem? If the petitioners had all the documentation where how much you would get, how much you could carry, how much, why is there, the state had obviously no input, there was just a petition put together by an organization, they went out and got their signatures and put it on the ballot, and then the state has to figure it out? Is that what, basically, we're talking about?
You got it.
All right, just asking.
And that, actually, something I should have put on the presentation, I forgot about. So, one of the provisions within this law is, should the city, should the city of Lincoln Park say, "We don't want this," so mayor and council vote to opt out. The residents can petition and have a vote on the ballot to actually allow it.
May I?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
This is where the legal part is.
All right, this is where it gets a little confusing, because
Really?
The initiative language of this act, according to what I've been told, is problematic. Given the wording, it can't be assumed that voters can initiate an ordinance to opt in should the local governing body choose to exempt the municipality from the act, because the language says, "May initiate an ordinance to completely prohibit or provide for the number of marijuana establishments with the municipality." So, that language is unclear, that if this board, excuse me, if the city council said, "We want to opt out," I don't know, because there's no case law on this, I don't know if the initiative, the petition from the residents, would allow them to say, "override that," because all it said you could do was initiate an ordinance to completely prohibit or provide for the number. And it seems like if they wanted to say, to override it, they could have said language like that. So, once again, everything in this is unclear. It can't get more unclear. So, sorry to...
No, no.
Okay.
Thank you, that's why we have you sitting there.
Well, fast forward five years, if you want to know all the answers to this, but...
I have one quick statement. The facility over on John A. Papless, it has been there for two years. It has never, never complied to our laws. It has never got a certificate of occupancy. The fire department was refused entry in there, they have problems with the fire doors. The police department made many, many trips over there because of the neighbors complaining about the stench. And the police department was going to, wanted to initiate some type of a procedure to close them down. The Wayne County Prosecuting Office would not allow it because this was going to be on the ballot, and so they wanted to wait. According to John and the building department today, he's pretty sure it's closed, that they have moved out of there. He was going to verify that before tonight, but I don't see him here. So, the place that we allowed, that the former building superintendent allowed over there, never did comply, never did do anything. The caregivers never did register, never picked up any licenses, never applied for anything. They were operating completely illegally, and we, our hands were pretty much tied for two years.
Is there anything else?
Yeah. Is there anything in these ordinances and rules and regulations that allow an inspection by a qualified city individual, please fire our building department?
Amy?
There is nothing specifically in the language we have of the act right now. However, it said that we, as a municipality, were we to opt in, are able to have certain regulations. And then, that would become, you know, I think, we'd be able to regulate these businesses similar to the way we regulate other businesses, but once again, there's no case law out there, et cetera, et cetera.
So, if we opt in, then under the ordinance that we make, we can put that in there.
We can put the language in there. We're able to do certain types of regulation, and then, I guess, if we went too far, the courts would let us know at some point, know that's, that you're going to have, everything about this is going to end up in court, every word and every phrase, because it's not clear. It's very unclear. So, I don't know how much regulation we'd be allowed to have, other than that which is specifically stated, and stated rather ambiguously.
Typical state of Michigan.
Okay. Basic rules for coming up, just basic, just identify yourself when you're there. I would ask that before you would come up for a second time, that you let others have a first. We'll try to accommodate everybody that we can. So, with that, I don't want to, you don't have to raise your hand, just when the rostrum podium is ready, just go on up. Absent that, whoever wants to come on up.
Good day, Mayor and Council, Richard Kudrek. It is acknowledged that medical marijuana has value. People with diseases and debilitating injuries, marijuana has proven to relieve their symptoms. I would rather somebody who smoked marijuana than take opioids, all of the oxys and all of that stuff. With that being said, no one has a constitutional right to buy marijuana in Lincoln Park. If you opted out of medical marijuana because you had a feeling about it, against it, I don't know why you would opt in to anybody selling marijuana in here. You can go get your marijuana in any city you want. You've already talked about the cost involved, you know, the ordinances, the police, the fire. One of the things is, is that there's going to be significant administrative costs, there's going to be police and fire costs. And one of the things that has been mentioned is, the people are looking pie in the sky, saying, "Oh, we're going to get all of this revenue." I understand you don't have the answers today, but what's your best sense for, how much money can the city make? Will the additional revenue exceed the expected costs? And if the city decides to opt out today, can you opt in later after the state decides all of these other issues, which are so totally unclear? I think you should let us know a little bit more information than what you did already. Thank you.
I don't know about the opt.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, it's our understanding that if we made the determination to opt out, then at a later point, we wanted to change that, that it could happen. Yes, ma'am?
My name is Reverend Tracy Dupre. I'm a resident in Lincoln Park for four years. I've been told a few times that, by a lot of the people that are related to some board members and everything, I'm very much in the community. A lot of you know me, many of you don't. But that we don't want that type of traffic here. We don't want those type of people here. I'm a 55-year-old minister, retired 33 years from Ford, property owner. I work with the low-income people, with the food banks, I help them get their bills paid. We need this. We need the revenue. I live on the other side of Fort Street, behind Calder's. God help me, I won't walk up Fort Street by myself. It's ridiculous. The abandoned buildings, the stuff that's going on up there, we need revenue, we need businesses. We don't have a single solitary shopping center anymore. Fort Street is horrible. Now, of course, we all know about Sears Shopping Center. I don't know what we're going to do. We're not attracting businesses at all. And if we don't welcome some of these businesses of the future, maybe, we need to do something, because what we're doing is not working. That's all, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Leslie Knoe, precinct delegate of Lincoln Park. Thank you for having this study session to hear us out today. I think it's really important to hear out the people that live here and that will be frequenting these businesses. And as mentioned before, you know, our city is quite bare as far as lucrative and flourishing businesses anymore, just look at Fort Street. But also our roads, and then consider our schools as well, that could definitely use this revenue. I think that is the biggest and most key selling point to allowing these businesses within the city, that you would all absolutely have every control over the ordinances that they would be allowed to operate in. So, we would have a lot of control over that, but also, we would get so much in return. That's 35 percent of those profits of those businesses would go to our state transportation fund to fix our roads. 35 percent would help to go to our schools. 15 percent is for the municipalities to... 15% is for the municipalities to do with whatever they want. And then there's an additional 15% from the county, if there are cities within the county that participate, they get an additional 15%. I mean, just that alone should be enough to consider opting in. And so, for that, I thank you for your consideration in doing so tonight.
My name is William Larue. I'm a Down River resident. I'm a medical marijuana caregiver. I'm legally allowed to grow 72 plants. I'm looking for a place where I can grow, grow only, not sell, no drug trafficking. And as far as the smell goes, you can use filters. Filters, you will not have that smell outside your building. It's just a point I wanted to make, and it would bring revenue to any cities that would come in, because I had to pay for licensing, I had to pay taxes on the place and everything else. But, no drug trafficking on my end. That's all I wanted to let everyone know. Plus, I was an opiate addict, I guess I still am, but I don't take opiates anymore. The medical marijuana got me off.
I'm Kimberly Comer. I sometimes work in the assessing department occasionally, and I am a resident of Lincoln Park. I just did a cursory glance at the equalization reports for our city from 2008, when the market crashed, till now. Our state equalized value for commercial properties are still $50 million below where they were when the market crashed out. And if you look at our industrial state equalized values, we're about $9 million below where we were when the market crashed. So, to me, anyone that wants to come in and raise our commercial industrial values, it's all right by me. But then, also on a personal level, I just think that, you know, we had the vote of the support and everyone, and I think encouraging entrepreneurship will definitely help boost personal wealth in the city, because I think the one report just came back, and we have more citizens living in poverty this year than we did the previous year. So, anything we can do to encourage people to start their own businesses, become self-employed, and to, you know, make their own money and support themselves is something we should be encouraging. Thanks.
Thanks, Kim.
Hello, I'm Joe Kaiser. We heard this marijuana stuff, and we've done it before, and we approved it on Papless Drive, that's where it should be approved, period. You have people that invested money in there, and they should be allowed to open their business there. We can't have fly-by-night places that don't even have any idea what's in the marijuana you're getting. Till the state figures that one out, that's another issue. I mean, you have pesticides, this and that, from everybody else. I don't know all the stories on everything, but I know we have a gentleman here that, you know, he bought a place here with, you know, under our zoning, it's approved. So, why would we just cancel that one out? We don't need it up and down to dime stores and stuff like that. That's my opinion, anyway, but... And you can do whatever you can. You can grow it in your own house, whatever they say now, right? So, anyway, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Andy Segarty, Lincoln Park. I'd like to deviate from this procedure we're doing right now. It's something of a positive nature. I know you people are, the snow emergency that just developed, oh, maybe a month or so ago, the city did not plow our streets. In Riot Pal and Regina, I took a course of action to call councilman Tom Murphy. Within a matter of hours, he got back to me and he says, "Andy, we'll take care of the problem." Believe it or not, that evening, Allen Park, snow plows came in, took care of it.
Do you have anything on the...
Yes, I do, Mayor.
Marijuana, okay.
Okay, just a second. I just want to take this opportunity to thank Tom Murphy personally for a job well done. Okay, let's get back to this marijuana. You know, for a number of years, myself, Joe, and Mr. Makino, we talked to the city manager, and a number of people in the council, building inspectors, time after time, they says, "No place except Papless Drive." You got it listed now as a general industrial district, which is the same. If that place is still open, we got Mr. Makino's undeveloped property on Papless and Auto Drive. That would take care of the whole problem. That was in the ordinance at one time. No place except Papless Drive. And we, he honored that until it's, he purchased the property. So, Mayor and Council, the case is closed, really. You put it, give the permits on Auto Drive, on Auto Drive and Papless Drive, also known as the general industrial district. You have no problems at all. It's solved. It's that easy. You're issuing the permits, you don't have to worry about nickel-dime operations all over the city or anything. Right now, you got it. Papless Drive makes it easy for the whole council. Thank you.
My name's Gary Jubek. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm a three-time cancer survivor, recently lost my wife, the third time to occur life. Marijuana has been a blessing to us, that's all I can tell you. I mean, going through the chemo and the treatments, and not being able to eat, not being able to swallow, it's been a blessing to us to have that opportunity. But unfortunately, I've had to operate illegally to obtain this blessing, if you look at it that way. I'm hearing all these rules and regulations, and I understand that we definitely need to have rules and regulations, but I would like to see them not get so complicated, that it would eliminate a small guy, like myself, to get into this business. I think it's an excellent opportunity for cities. Marijuana's been around for thousands, thousands of years, so it's nothing, I think it's nothing new that we're getting into. It's the licensing and regulations to be law-abiding, if you would. And I'd like to see, if the city doesn't undertake this, to have the rules and regulations be not so overcoming, and so expensive, that it would eliminate some of us smaller guys. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Kirch, and I've been a resident in Lincoln Park since 1991. My husband's family has been a member of, his family was, the Kirch Morrison family, they were residents here back in, to the 50s. So, I'm here because I work in a medical marijuana provisioning center. I work in River Rouge. It is a very complicated business. I personally do not run recreational marijuana sales in my city. That's me. I am 100% medical marijuana sales. If this could open up into that, I know that you've opted out before, but I think that's a medical provisioning center here would bring in the revenue. We've been 11 years at this, the state still doesn't have a program, so everything, even with the recreational, you're looking five years from now, before you ever really know what's going to happen. They dismissed the whole LARA board. April 1st, they're going to have a new, a whole new batch of people. These people aren't going to be, how would you say, what's the words? Conflicts of interest.
Morons.
They have big conflicts of interest. They had people who were anti-marijuana in their cities and counties, but yet were sitting on a medical marijuana board for the LARA. It's, you know, it was just, it was a mess. So, not only that, but there's a lot of big state fees. Recreationally, your city's looking at, what, a $5,000 fee per building? The state gets $66,000 every year. I'm just not for the rec part of it. I wish we could open it back up to the medical. And let's keep the growing on Papless Drive, and let the caregivers do what they need to do. And that's just, that's it. I'm just for the medical. Thank you.
If I can digress just for a second, too, to go back.
Have your name, sir.
Rick Custer, and I'm also a grower. The high school program that we tried to put together, myself and Larry and the mayor knew about it, at the new facility, it will be next year, not this year, and I will keep pushing that to bring the Lincoln Park High School students into that program. On the marijuana situation, I'm like the gentleman here, I was taking four Narcal's a day and two Xanax. I got a salve that I put on my leg, I have no more problems with a sciatic nerve. I haven't taken a Narcal in over, almost a year and a half. It works.
Amen.
Now, what does an establishment take in? We have establishments in Detroit, and I'm taking in $100,000 a week. That's a lot of money coming back into this city. My opinion, if we could even tax it 2% more, put it in our firemen, in our police pension funds, and cover their medical. That's very, very important to me, because I still have relatives here, and they're on the medical, they've been cut from the fire department. The facilities, as I say, I am a grower, but that one thing I didn't hear, I can now sell to dispensaries, that was changed, just when the new governor got in. So, we are allowed to sell to dispensaries.
Until the 31st.
Okay, you're right, you're right. But again, just to put growers in, if I were running this situation, I would put, because Windout's opted out, Allen Park's opted out, River Rouge is in, E-course is in, Brownstown is one of the few, Taylor has opted in, Brownstown is so-so. I would put on each corner of my city, a place to buy it, because all these other cities are going to be flocking in here to buy it. So, again, I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Folks, just, only the person at the podium would be speaking. Thanks.
Jason Baer, Lincoln Park resident, Parks and Rec Commissioner. I'm also fully supportive of recreational marijuana coming into our city. I believe it's a national movement where it's only increasing every election cycle, more and more states are doing it. People have noted the revenue that can bring in. For me, it's about ending the stigma that people have surrounding marijuana, well, since it's been illegal for decades and decades. We have so many legal drugs that are so much more harmful to our society, alcohol, tobacco, nicotine. Marijuana is not chemically addictive, that's a scientific fact. Lots of things can be physically addictive. I was addicted to Candy Crush on my smartphone, not, you know, not too long ago, and that was my choice. And I believe Lincoln Park has a lot of different places that it could go into. I like how the ordinance gives a lot of local control for which times, which types, how many. And it was, it would just be bypassing a very big opportunity to let new businesses that want to open up come in here. Every city council meeting, people try to highlight some of the new businesses that are coming in, but then, the Payless Shoe Store, two blocks from my house, that just went out of business, or it's like, we gain and we lose, and we don't, you know, we end up not getting too far. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you.
If you don't mind me reapproaching, my name again is Leslie Canoe, precinct delegate. While I was rattling off statistics earlier, I forgot to mention the overwhelming vote that Lincoln Parkers, how they voted this past November, and that was 66%, just so that you guys knew. And even surrounding cities were up in the 60%. E-course was 68%, Windout was 65%. So, we know that if we are the city that has these businesses, they will be flocking here. So, thank you, I'll leave you with that.
Hi, my name is Ron Makino. I'm not a resident. I'm the guy that owns the corner of Papless and Auto Drive. I used to be a resident, Old Goddard and Dix, or rather, Old Goddard and halfway between Dix and Fort. I wasn't going to get up and speak tonight, but I kind of got dragged into this, I guess. Let me tell you how I got involved, if I can. It's been about eight years ago now, I came down with, I had cancer. The statistic is that 1 in 2.3 men will get cancer in their lifetime, and 1 in 2.6 women will get cancer in their lifetime. That statistic is a few years old. I sincerely believe that it's a lot more than that now. I mean, it seems like every other day you hear of someone that you know. I came down, I had, I'm not going to go into the whole thing, but I had a lymph node that was misdiagnosed, and so they gave it the opportunity to grow for another four months before I got it diagnosed correctly. When they diagnosed me correctly, I was stage four. At that particular time and point, your life is on a line, so you do anything you can. I went to the different hospitals around and interviewed them, and it'd take me too long to find out I was a dollar bill. I saw the signs in their eyes, I was a million dollars waiting to be cashed. I wound up taking traditional treatment at Caramana's Hospital. I became cancer-free, and I went from 195 pounds down to 156 pounds. I lost my taste. It was a very difficult trip, but thank God, I made it. You go back on regular checkups. Your checkups are, for the first year, once a month, second year, once every three months, and six months a year. I'm now, in April, six years cancer-free. I, on one of my three-month checkups, the doctor said to me, "I've been watching something enlarge in your throat." And he said, "If it's still there," he said, "It's been there the last two times, two trips, and it's enlarging." He said, "If it's there the next time I'm taking a biopsy." Well, I mean, we don't have to guess what it was. At that time, I went home, I sat down in my chair, and I said, "Nah, I'm not going through that again, ain't going to happen." So, I called someone I knew that had Simpson Oil. If you don't know of Rick Simpson Oil, you will in your lifetime, you will in a short period, especially if you find someone that has, one of your friends or relatives that has cancer, they're going to be taking it. So, I got ahold of a fellow, and I said to you, "Is that's correct, right?"
Yes, that's correct.
So, I got ahold of a fellow that I knew, and I said, "Please, get me some Simpson Oil." I started taking that Simpson Oil immediately. I took it religiously for 90 days. I went back, and it was gone. It was gone. And there wasn't anything that I did any different. So, I am, by trade, an entrepreneur, I guess you would call me. I'm a businessman, I have an advertising company, I'm into a number, I do a number of things. I came up from Lincoln Park, okay, nobody gave me anything. And so, having had that experience, I said, "Well, this is great. This is something, this is a business." I saw way back then, that it was in its infancy, and it still is, it's not an industry yet. It's, as you've mentioned, there's a lot of loose ends that need to be tied up. I'm currently the president of the Medical Marijuana Cannabis Chamber of Commerce, okay? I'm working with the governor and working with LARA. That board will be, will run through the end of April, and then LARA is going to do the vetting of the applications, as it should have been in the beginning. The board had, as one lady said, had some people on it who had one man who was just prejudiced. I mean, if God would have went up there, he was going to vote no on him. So, it wasn't handled as well as it could be. I could sit and beat on the state and say they should have done this and did that, et cetera, but it's a pretty big elephant to get your arms around. It appears to me that this new governor is really, really giving it an effort, and I think she's going to pull it together pretty good. The thing that I wanted to, the couple of things I wanted... The, 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 the thing that I wanted to, the couple of things I wanted to get through to you is, I, I'm not here, okay, saying, "You should let Papulus have it. That should be the only place." You'll decide that. I'm going to say to you, you have an awful lot of vacant buildings around the city. Do not fill those buildings with, with people that are gonna create headaches for you, with people that are, are not gonna be an asset to the city. Over in River Rouge, there are several licenses, and not one of those licenses has created a problem for the city. We've been open since June 29th, and the police have not been to our place one time. Well, one police officer was. He asked us about some stuff. He had some pain. We've got salves and stuff. Oops, I'm sorry. We have salves and things, and it's amazing, okay, what is available. As a matter of fact, I'll give you a couple of quickies. There was, someone brought me a, a young lady, oh, I guess it's been over a year, a while back now, and she had cancer all over her body, and she had, they gave her four months to live. I kept her going for a year. We lost her not too long ago. I, recently, I was in the place when a lady, probably 70 years old, came in with her daughter because she was a little intimidated about coming into a medical marijuana place. And she was a minister, and she had a hard time walking without a walker, and she was in a lot of pain. So me and, I call them my kids because, and I do hire, we've got all local people, and I think the rest of the people in River Rouge have pretty much done the same thing. So we've, we've created a pretty good little employment for the local folks. So I got together with, with some of my kids, and I just happened to be there and heard that lady, and so I stepped up, and she was really nervous. I just reached out and I held her hand all the time she was there. Well, we got her on, on, on something that we thought would help her, and while she could still function, you know. And she came back in a couple of days, and she was just so happy. She said, "For the first time, I was able to walk through the mall without my walker. Thank you very much." Those are the kind of stories that we run across a lot, and we do run into a lot of people that have opioid problems. I had a guy working for me, and he had just gotten out of the hospital about a month before that. And he was telling me about the stomach pains that he was having, and his doctor wouldn't give him any more prescription for pain. And I said, "Man, you, you, you've got withdrawal symptoms." And that's exactly what he had. And we got him off that. But it's so easy with those opioids. Everyone thinks of the opioid users, "Well, you know, yeah, there are people that are out there trying to get..." No. They get hooked into it. It's just so easy for them to do it. It happens. And so there's a lot of those people that we can help. I wanna say, when it comes to, if you opt in, when it comes to your selection of business and businesses, bring, bring businesses that can be an asset to the city. If somebody wants to come in and rent, rent one of the old storefronts and go in with 25 gallons of green paint and stick a, a big marijuana tree out front, it's not gonna do a hell of a lot for the city. Not gonna do a lot for the image, and it's not gonna bring you money, and it's probably gonna be headaches. Over in River Rouge, it appears to me that most of the people have done a pretty good job. I myself took a vacant, vacant piece of property, and between the two licenses that we hold there, I'll have an investment, what I do now, okay, it's, it's over $2 million. And at the end of the day, that's gonna bring about $150,000 to $180,000 worth of new, new taxes to the city, plus whatever they get out of the marijuana fund. So I say to you, okay, just like that property on Papulus that I have over there, if I do that property on Papulus, if you're happy with me and if you opt in, I'll probably invest three to $4 million over there. And that's a, a nice piece of change every year for taxes. If you include the personal property taxes, I'm gonna say, just take a wild shot, you're probably looking at a quarter of a million dollars or better every year. We do not create problems. We have not had the police one time. There's not been one incidence. We have security there. We are well-lit. All of the places in River Rouge have, have adhered to that. Haven't heard of a problem with any of them. And as I mentioned to you, we're bringing local people in. So the only thing, the last thing I wanna say to you is, if you do opt in, give it some considerable thought about where you want it, and allow it to be an asset, not a problem. If you get the right operators and they do the right things, you won't have any problems. Okay? Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Erin Lammers. I'm a representative from Denaskis Consulting and Development. We're a government relations firm based in Lake Orion. And I wanna thank the council and additional administrative staff for providing the opportunity to discuss the possibility of adult use in Lincoln Park. So throughout the MMFLA's creation and implementation, our firm has had a seat at the table influencing legislation that best suits Michigan's patient population. Obviously, now that's shifting, as some communities consider moving to the adult use space. I'm here representing a nationally renowned tech mapping company for the industry, which connects patients with reliable information about nearby and faraway facilities across the US. They don't touch the plant, but they're interested in effective common sense ordinances that best fit individual municipalities, which I think we can all agree on. I'm here to discuss, based on the way that the MMFLA has been implemented, obviously keeping in mind that we don't yet know how the adult use laws will be implemented, that municipalities are allowed to establish regulations, to an extent, as we heard earlier, specifically tailored to their individual community values and needs. So the best way to ensure that the application process for applicants for these facilities is competitive yet fair is to utilize a merit-based point system. I personally have experience in the local and state level application processes, so safe to say we can, you know, see what has and has not worked. And to go further with that, the best way to ensure that residents from Lincoln Park prosper is to implement provisions in the application process that award additional points to people who fit certain qualifications, such as being a resident of the city yourself, or, you know, for hiring so many residents in the city at your business. And this way, you know, the city can provide an effective leg up to these residents in the, in this area that they live with expertise in the industry. Thank you.
Hi, Joyce Murray. I'm a fact-based person, and I know that running a city, that's how you all also need to be. So I hear a lot of stories up here and people saying how it's helped them, which is a good thing, right? But we're, what are the numbers? What are the statistics, right? So I wanna bring a few numbers to your attention. 4,000 retail stores closing in 2019. That's 4,000 companies that are gonna be closing around the US. How many of those are gonna be here in our local community? In Wayne County alone, the marijuana law did pass, or, you know, it did say that a majority of the residents wanted it. So 399,059 people voted yes in Wayne County alone. So if you were to opt in, that's a potential 400,000 people that could be frequenting our city. Because on the news report, and I couldn't find it to get you that number, roughly 65 cities in Wayne County, Macomb County, and Oakland County have already opted out. So when you consider those numbers, it seems to be that Lincoln Park is in a unique position because we are financially in a position where we need to start doing something, but we don't have the business appeal. We don't have the curb appeal. So this could be our step up in the game. How can we make this work for us? Again, that 400,000 number of potential people coming into our city. Not only are they gonna frequent those businesses, but others as well. Knowing that we have that walk-through traffic in our city that other cities may not, will help increase the business flow. And think of all the profits and revenues that other businesses are gonna make, and it's gonna want more businesses, it's gonna want to allow more businesses to come into our city. So please take that into consideration.
All right, William LaRue, again. I just had another question or a plea or whatever, not to just limit it to Papulus Drive. I've been down Papulus Drive. Most of the buildings down there are 20, 25,000 square foot. I'm a small business, 72 plants, quite a bit, but I don't need that much space. I need approximately, the most space I would approximately need is 5,000 square foot. If you could open it to other buildings, it's abandoned buildings or whatever, that would be great. So, like I said, I couldn't, I couldn't afford no 25,000 square foot building. I would have no use for it. You gotta keep, medical marijuana's gotta be kept at a certain temperatures, certain humidities, the lighting, you know, it's just, just a lot, lot to it. So I'm hoping that they'll open it up to other parts rather than just Papulus Drive. Like I said, if a smell's an issue, there's filters, you won't smell a thing. You can be right outside the door, you, you won't smell it. So I just wanted to bring up that because I'm looking for a smaller place. Thank you.
Reverend Tracy Dupree, again. I'm also part of fan with Judge Greg Clifton and Geno Salamone, which is Families Against Narcotics. Opioid addiction horrible in Lincoln Park, horrible down river. And I, I know people personally that are addicted, and I try to get them off of it. I had double knee replacements and went off of it after two weeks because it paranoised me because it's such a horrible thing. And I've seen many people use marijuana for pain in place of opioids. And I did wanna mention that because I do have a strong issue with the opioid epidemic. I've watched seven kids that my children know die from either narco, overdose, or heroin. And there's, they're walking the streets in our city at night. I watch them out my front window.
Last time, Joe Kaiser. Joe Kaiser. I was wondering, what did our planning consultants say about this? Don't worry. That's one we usually used to use to our consultation, right? Right or wrong, right? Used to be McKenna, I don't know the new ones out there, but they should give us advice on what, what they think's the right. Haven't heard that, so that's my last comment.
The chair, if I may, I know this might not be proper, but where's our police chief? He should be here at this meeting because he's the one that's gonna either enforce it or not enforce the rules. And all the rest of the town halls that I've seen on TV, the police chief has come to the meetings, and he showed how much the marijuana that you can, which is a very good visible. He's also talked about the city itself because he controls the city. He's the cop. He's the top policeman in this city. He's the one that puts the route for the stuff together for the patrols to go out. He takes the, the input in. He knows what's going on in the city. He, he runs the streets, period. Our bar and anybody out there, he runs them 24/7. That's his job. And I think we're remiss in not having a police chief. I don't, so much the planning person, but the police chief should definitely be here.
Well, he wasn't, he wasn't asked to be here by...
No, I'm just, just saying that...
By, by counsel.
But I'm just saying, before...
Is Kaiser police?
If we, it's just my comment. I, I thought he was, I didn't know we had to do that. From now on, I'll make sure I make the effort to make that email go out, but I thought he was gonna be here. But I think that the next meeting or the next study session, we definitely have the police chief here to give us a, his consensus of what he thinks about the different process.
Understand that, but...
That's all.
The purpose of, of this study session was to hear from, from the people.
Well, I understand, but I've seen, I've seen other town halls, like I say, for other communities, when they decide to opt in or opt out, Mayor, and they invite the police chief because that helps with the stories and the indication and the comments and the, you know, what's happening in the community. Because he's also the person that does it on the regular places. That's his job. That's what he does for a living. So that's what I'm saying, and I think it would be nice to have him hear some of these comments because he also is gonna be the person that advises the council based upon the police chief's interpretation. That's all I'm saying.
Again, this is going to be videotaped, and it is in the process of being videotaped, and he can comment on it and advise. I'm sure that this is not gonna be your last discussion when it comes to, when it comes to this. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Leslie Knope, again. I just really had a question about the, the voting process, I guess, that, that you guys would, would do for this. How, how does that go? How, if and when will the residents be notified? And will we be able to be a part of it? Or can you guys tell me a little bit about how the vote goes and, and the results and...
It would be an item that would be placed on the resolution. The items are put up at least a week before, so you would need to take a look at the city website where the agenda is posted each week. At that point, you would then be able to discuss, once a motion has been put forward and seconded. If you were an interested party, you would be able to talk for, for three minutes on that. So, and then the other interested party could vote either, either way. So at, at some point, it's going to be a little bit down the road because we'll see what the state's gonna do first, anyway. There was somebody else that was, that was in line or wanted to be in line? I see no one, no one else. Is there a further comment from, from council?
I have a comment question, Your Honor. If, the two gentlemen who have businesses, if you wouldn't mind giving me your addresses afterwards, 'cause I'd like to come by. Thank you.
Okay, anything further from, from council? Okay, at which point, we will adjourn the study session at 7:36?
That was quick.
Thank you all for coming. We appreciate your input.